Alright. Having reached the hour of 5:31 PM, I am calling the June 1st, 2021 Modesto City Council meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call the rule.
Councilmembers Madrigal? Councilmember Ricky? Councilmember Solaki?
Here.
Councilmember Knoyer?
Here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Councilmember Escuicia Brayden?
Here.
Mayor Swollen?
Here. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation from Marvin Jacobo from City Ministry Network?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please pray with me. Master, we love our city. And you love it more than we do. In the scriptures, you've said that citizens ought to willingly work alongside the governing authorities, since you have established those very leaders to promote peace, order, and justice. Because of that directive, I pray first for the families of our council members because they surely sacrifice their loved one to our city. Pray for the various levels of city officials that are even here this evening or even now on their way homes with their families, but specifically for this assembled council. Pray for them, Lord, give them wisdom and strength. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times and communities, that you would give them a sense of the welfare and true needs of all of our citizens, a keen thirst for justice for all. Give them the ability to work together in harmony even as there is honest disagreement. Give them the courage to lead as they're ought. Give each council member peace in their lives and joy in their task. We are assured that you are blessing them because of their sacrifice of service to our great city. May you align us all to move our city toward a dream that our communities would be a good place, be good places to grow up in and to grow old in. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Amen.
Thank you.
Does the city clerk have any announcements?
We have not received any written email comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Do any of the council members have any conflicts of interest? Seeing that, there was no closed session today. Next is our acknowledgements and presentations. Do we have any acknowledgements and presentations? Alright, we will hear from Stanluss County Board of Supervisors Manny Graywall for update related to COVID-19.
Thank you so much, Mayor, council, city manager, and staff. Just a quick update today. I hope you guys all found it very beneficial with Dr. V last week. I think she did a good job explaining most things. So I'm just, we didn't have a board meeting, but we did get briefed on some of the positive signs that, you know, some of the stuff with the pandemic, especially case rates, is coming down. Last week, we were able to vaccinate about 1,000 new doses of either first or single dose and about 1,000 second doses. Still on track for the June 15th reopening of the economy. So it is still encouraging that we did reach the orange tier for the first week because of case rate. And we have to stay in it for two weeks to actually be in orange tier, which would be next Tuesday, the 8th. But then the subsequent week on June 15th is the reopening of the economy barring any unforeseen circumstances. There's also a link, I can share it or email it to you, about the COVID-19. The governor's plan to really incentivize people that haven't been vaccinated to get vaccinated. So the link pretty much explains that the first 2 million Californians receiving vaccination after May 27th, they're, will be receiving a $50 gift card. And then Friday, June 4th and June 11th will be the drawing for the $50,000 winners. And on 6/15 is the drawing for the $1.5 million. And there'll be 10 of those winners on 6/15. But there's a link that explains all this. And for us at the county, obviously, we want to incentivize everybody to get vaccinated, especially children 12 years and above that are now eligible because that just makes it much more safer for the full reopening of schools in the fall. So that's the encouragement that we have. And for that reason, we're really having locations where it's a lot easier for children 12 and over. Like this Friday, we'll be having a vaccination site at Modesto High School from 3 to 7. It'll be the J&amp;J for 18+, the Pfizer for 12 and over. And on Saturday at the West Modesto Community Center, again Pfizer for 12+ and J&amp;J, the single dose vaccination for anybody 18 or above. So those are kind of the updates with COVID. If there's any questions, I can answer them. But like I said, the update is probably a little brief because we feel that things are heading in the right direction and really looking forward to seeing if June 15th holds as the date where the state of California and subsequently the county of Stanluss and the city of Modesto open up. And although we still encourage, you know, all the precautions, at least businesses and families and travel, can, the travel requirements can lax a little bit.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from council members?
Yeah, I have a question.
Councilmember Knoyer?
Are the minors, are the, those under 18, are they going to be in the drawing?
I can get back to you on that. I'm assuming because it didn't specify age requirement, so I'm assuming that is. But I can get you a certain answer on that. It just said all Californians that have been vaccinated as of that date. So my initial response would be that anybody over, anybody getting vaccinated would be eligible. But I'll shoot you an email just giving clarification from Public Health.
So that means the 12-year-old can win $15 million?
1.5 million, yeah.
I mean, 1.5?
I do know that for the, for the big prize, everybody's eligible regardless of when you were vaccinated.
Yeah, well, I, it would be interesting to know if anybody, you know, that isn't a, that isn't a adult, anybody 18 and under is going to be in the drawing.
That's a good question, Jenny. I'll get back to you on that because I have four children, three children over the age of 12, so I want to make sure if they win that they share their, share their blessings.
Everybody's going to go get their kids vaccinated then.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. I'll email the entire council back on that.
I believe, I believe I read Supervisor Graywall, I believe I read somewhere that they are eligible and that the money would be held in trust until they turn 18. I believe I've read that.
Alright. Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Any other comments from the public regarding Supervisor Graywall's report? Any comments from council members? Alright, thank you very much for that report.
Thank you. Enjoy your evening. Have a great meeting.
Take care. Next is the public comment period. Does anyone wish to speak on any item under public comment? This is for items not on the council agenda. And you have three minutes to speak. And I have one blue card, Demetrius Hall. If you would like to speak, you can step up to the microphone.
Mayor, is Councilmember Ricky going to be in attendance or have?
I do not know that.
Okay, thank you. It's just helpful to know when members are going to be here or not.
Thank you.
I'm not aware for sure.
Yes, city council.
Sorry for the interruption, Demetrius. Letting them know I'm present. I had trouble signing in.
Okay, that's fine.
We saw you.
Thank you.
Yes, it's for item 17 that I came, but not yet, it's not quite yet.
Correct.
Yeah, this is about maybe my second time coming in, so I'm quite.
Sure, no problem. Alright, we'll call your name when. Alright, any other?
Well, Mayor, I just want to get something straight here. I noticed I've been having this three minutes thing. Can we change that clock to five minutes when I speak?
Sure.
Sabalchin, I've got you for five.
Thank you. I thought I said three last time I was up here. Thank you.
Alright, sure. Does anyone else wish to speak under public comment for items not on the council agenda? I see Carmine Kalinda? Excuse us, we could not understand. We will go to the next person and see if we can make that work. Daisy Maraga?
Hello.
Hi there.
Okay, so my name is Daisy Maraga and I'm a member of the Modesto Progressive Democrats Club. I'd like to read a statement regarding the Civilian Oversight Review Board for Law Enforcement in Modesto. Modesto citizens have witnessed police officer misconduct and extreme use of force for years. While there is a sigh of relief with the news that Lieutenant LaMontea was terminated and will be charged with manslaughter in the death of Trevor Seaver, there is still more work to be done in a system that is established in systemic racism. But we would like to believe that not all law enforcement officers are bad cops. We clearly recognize that a good cop becomes a bad cop the minute they cover or overlook another officer's misconduct. A trusted law enforcement department is a much more effective law enforcement organization. The Modesto community has also spoken and demanded increased transparency in the review of police brutality. The current structure has city police investigating city police, followed by a district attorney being responsible for charging the police with a crime. This is an enormous conflict of interest and has failed our community in the example of Trevor Seaver. Anyone who knows how the DA deals their cases understands that there has to be very cooperative and intimate relationship between DA and police. It is incomprehensible to expect the DA to work with officers one day and then turn around and charge officers with a crime the next day. This is demonstrated in the case of Lieutenant LaMontea being charged with manslaughter when his actions clearly constitute first or second degree murder. Modesto Progressive Democrats Club demands that you establish a civilian oversight review board for Modesto City Police Department. This is the most effective way to remedy the lack of trust we are faced with and to prevent further damage from occurring. This should not only be supported by every city council member, the mayor, but also be embraced by law enforcement. A civilian oversight review board is the fastest way for officers to obtain the support they clearly need, an external voice to recommend help for officers when they show signs of trauma and stress, to support officers in false allegation claims, and to focus on areas of need for further department training. Many communities across the country have successfully integrated review boards for their law enforcement, and many of them have found integration between community and law enforcement to be advantageous. We support the Stanluss County Chapter ACLU and the WACP and faith in the valley's efforts in establishing a civilian review board. They have done the research and developed a template that would work well in our community. We support their model and ask that you work with them in order to begin development on this immediately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Ramon Rodriguez?
Good, everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Mayor and the city council members. First of all, I'm between Loveland, Colorado, so I could give a little bit of advice, still waiting for a public comment, but also I'm going to give my insight for how to start making the Oversight Committee a real thing. Last week, there was an officer-involved shooting on a teenager. And it's between the Modesto Police Department and Stanluss County Sheriff's Department. But the video that the sheriff gave was not satisfied. And also, we need to know whether Modesto has their body cam video. And they need to release it to the public as soon as possible for raising accountability and transparency to see what's happening. Also, the police chases has to change because that recent incident, it involved teenagers, mostly minors. And police chases is another thing of police violence. And not only it puts danger to the police officers and the perpetrators they're chasing, but also members of the public. You might not remember, but back in 2019, the Modesto Police Department chased three car theft suspects from a Bay Area in a stolen car. And a tragic outcome is that they lost control of their car, crashed into a taco truck, and ended up killing two innocent bystanders who were just waiting to get their tacos. It has to end, it has to change right now because police chases are, puts more people in danger. And there are also alternatives through chasing the people with cars. Police chases should only be a fourth felony evasion or high-risk chase. There are other alternatives that a police can use such as the star, the guy, the star chaser guy thing, which they shoot from the grill of their car into the suspect's car. So they'll call off the pursuit, but they'll let the other officers who tracked the car down and take down the suspect without involving a police chase. Or also use a helicopter to track down the suspect without having multiple patrol cars. And in the wake of this, of this tragedy involving the death of, of a 17-year-old, this is going to change right now because police chases are dangerous and it's another symbol of police violence. And we got to protect the people of Modesto from any more police cowboy cop-style action. And that includes police chase. So in the next Forward Together meeting, I'm going to include that to change the policies of police chases. And that would be all. I'll go back to Loveland, Colorado to give advice on how to improve the relationship between the community and the police. And that'd be all.
Thank you. Next is Bianca Lopez?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I, I am too also, I'm also calling about a little critique of the Forward Together initiative. And I did not attend the last city council meeting, so it seemed like it was very last-minute publicity on social media and on the website. I request that the video recorded of that meeting be easily accessible on the Forward Together page so that people don't have to go to another site or another link to get the video of that meeting. Only 40 or a little over 40 people attended, which is poorly attended, and that is due to the lack of publicizing last-minute coordination. It's, it seems like the organizations that have been suggested for the committee all seem to be entities. Not all of them, some of them I agree with. I am not in, I'm not sure why the Modesto Police or the Officers Association needs to be involved. I think if it's going to be open to the public, then they can listen just like we are. They should not be at the table as part of the committee. Neither should the Sheriff's Department. It's just, it's really frustrating to see that you think that their input is necessary in such committee. There is no individual as part of that committee that does not represent an organization. That, that's another fail on your part. The city manager needs to allow the city council members to also give suggestions. Mayor, I suggest you take lead on this and not the city manager. I'm also really disappointed in, in the city manager who has shared at the Safety and Communities Meeting, or Committee Meeting, that he stated that you all are doing research already at the moment about cahoots and alternative programs to calling the police department regarding nonviolent and mental health issues. He did say to me that he would be given a report on what their current findings have been, and he has failed to do so. So, you know, your word is, is not worth a lot here. So I, you guys need to show that we can trust you. And one way to do that is for the Modesto Police Department to release the video of their, their body camera and their dash camera of the incident of Xander Mann in relationship and collaboration with the Sheriff's Department. Xander was a student of mine when he was in elementary school, and he did not deserve to die. The police knew that he was a teen. They knew that there was young people in the car, that they were just kids, as stated in the, in the video that the sheriffs released, which was BS. There, you can't see anything in that video. And so if you want to keep moving forward together, then the police department, the Modesto Police Department needs to reveal their video in its entirety without it being doctored up, just like the sheriffs did. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin McClarty?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. The, for some reason, the unmute button was not showing up. Okay, here I am. I wanted to speak to you about a problem that is really, really becoming an issue here in Modesto. And that is a problem where citizens, or shall I say just people, I don't know whether they're citizens or not, people jaywalking at night on very busy streets like, like McKinney, Riggs Moore, Ninth Street, Yosemite, and other streets that are, you know, high-traffic areas. And it really is becoming a perplexing problem. And a lot of these people wear dark clothing and that cannot be seen. The city light, lighting is very poor in most of these streets. And so I, I believe that the best solution would be for the city to try to get a federal grant for motor officers and bicycle officers who exclusively concentrate on jaywalkers at night. And these officers would not be responding to other kinds of calls. They would not be on the regular radio circuit, you know, responding to armed robberies and, you know, family disputes and things like that. They would only be, they would only be focusing on people jaywalking. And I'm hoping that the city can look into getting a federal grant like this. It really is becoming a problem, and it's not fair to motorists. It's not fair to a motorist if a motorist hits somebody and now their life is ruined. That's not fair to them. And even if they were not found at fault, the emotional trauma, that's not something that a person just gets over. And I, I think that the city needs to take measures to protect citizens against having to face something like that. And it's, it's the city's responsibility to do what it can to make the streets safer. And so I also would suggest that if necessary, that the city council appoint some sort of a committee, a fact-finding committee or something of citizens, to look into this further and see what can be done. And that they regularly provide reports and so on to the city so that this is not something that just fades away. This is a real problem and it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I see Carmine Kalinda again. Shall we see if we can understand more clearly?
Huh? Can I shit in your mouth, motherfucker?
Alright, next is Sarbat?
Hello?
Hi, sir.
Hi, my name is Sarvit. I'm a community member of Modesto. I'm calling because just a couple weeks ago, Gerardo Zazueta shot and killed a 16-year-old boy by the name of Xander Mann. Xander and his friends were allegedly stopped, starting fire registration in a broken headlight. In the video, in the video footage that we have seen, an officer pulled over Xander and asked him to open the window and turn his car off. Like a child, like a very scared child, Xander decided to speed off. At this point, police had already gotten his license plate, and that is really all they needed to, to consequences for a traffic infraction. So really, there was no need for a pursuit. At the four-minute mark in the video, you can hear one of the deputies say, "There's children in here, there's kids in here." Law enforcement conducted two stupid maneuvers, and the second one resulted, the second maneuver that law enforcement conducted resulted in Gerardo Mann's, I'm sorry, Xander Mann's car getting too close to Zazueta, which is, which is why he shot. He shot, killing Xander Mann and seriously harming another minor in the car who is still on life support. In response to killing a child on duty, Zazueta had said that he did not have time to turn on his body cam. I'm having a really hard time understanding how he was involved in a 20-mile police chase and didn't have any time during that chase to turn on his body camera. That makes that. during that chase to turn on his body camera. That makes absolutely no fucking sense. A traffic stop resulted in a child's loss of life and another one being on life support. Just last year, Joseph Lomantio shot and killed Trevor Seaver, and I'm here to demand justice for both Xander Mann and Trevor Seaver. I demand an oversight and review board for law enforcement because police should not have the power to be their own judge and jury. Again, my name is Sarfita, and I'm, I've been a very longtime community, commu- community member of Modesto. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next I have Miss Shay, and I took you out of order. I apologize.
Yes, um, hello.
Hi, there.
Um, yeah, just like the last community member has spoken, um, and a couple of other, other community members, such as Bianca and Daisy, uh, just addressing police misconduct and lack of tra- transparency, uh, between the police system. Um, and the community, uh, definitely is a huge issue in Modesto, um, especially with, uh, police violence within our community, as, as the last community member has spoken, um, about the murder of Trevor Seaver. I just wanna uplift his name as well. Um, and Xander Mann, uh, a child, um, who, um, shouldn't have, should not, should not be, should be alive right now. Um, and um, I, I just think it's really suspicious that out of, you know, um, all of the footage that was released, that piece of the footage, you know, um, magically just isn't there. Uh, so I definitely demand that, uh, if there is additional footage, that that is also, um, released to the public. Definitely wanna echo community members who spoke about, uh, having a, a community re- review board that is strictly the, uh, community and, you know, without, uh, having direct, uh, involvement with, uh, law enforcement's at the table. Of course, they're very encouraged to listen in, uh, but as far as, uh, decision-making, that should be, you know, up to the community. Um, you know, so, uh, the system can definitely be better, um, the city can be better uh, as far as being transparent, uh, with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, Kyle Seaver. Yes, try to say something, Kyle. It was a little bit, um, distorted.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so I'm Kyle Seaver, Trevor Seaver's brother. Uh, I'm calling in.
Kyle, we're unable to hear you. Your call dropped. Just wait maybe a moment. Here, okay. Now we see you here again.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, so my name's Kyle Seaver. I'm Trevor Seaver's younger brother. I'm calling in. Uh, we still haven't got full transparency on my brother's case. Uh, I suspect he has slandered my brother. He still hasn't released the full nine-one-one call. Um, it's very obvious. I'd say sixteen-year-old Xander was just murdered by the sheriffs as well. We've been calling and fighting every single week. Are y'all gonna step up, make some changes, take some accountability? I don't know what else it's gonna take. How many more lives have to be taken? It's not okay. You guys can't keep brushing this under the rug and think it's gonna go away. We need the full tape. We know that there's more footage out there from Xander. We know that there's more of the nine-one-one call for Trevor Seaver's case. Stop, him and you guys, the transparency. Stop claiming that you guys are here for the community. You're not. Look yourself in the mirror when you go to bed tonight, and really ask yourself if you're doing everything you can for your community. 'Cause I guarantee you that there's gonna be enough. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any? Is there anyone else wishing to come forward to speak on their public comment period, and this is for items not on the agenda? Hunter?
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I mostly just wanted to talk about what, um, other community members have been saying. I truly believe that there needs to be more police oversight. There is a ridiculous amount of police misconduct from MPD, and a lot of it doesn't make it to the news. A lot of, um, the body cam footage doesn't get released. Like others have said, it frequently gets just swept under the rug. And I don't understand why this has been allowed. It is absolutely disgusting. And I believe that as city council members, as local government officials, you need to care more about this because enough is enough. The community members are tired. And that is all I had to s- like, I really have to say, just, we need more accountability. We need oversight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. I currently do not see any other people wishing to speak. Is that correct, from what I'm seeing? Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, we will move on to the consent items. Will the city clerk please read the consent items?
Item number two, consider approving the minutes from the May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one council meeting. Item number three, consider amending section four of the Housing and Urban Development Policies and Procedures Manual. Item number four, consider approving a resolution of intention to form City of Modesto Community Facilities District Number Two Thousand Twenty-One-Dash-One Wood Glen and area bounded by Palindale Avenue, Carver Road, Banks Avenue, and Tully Road. Item five, consider approving a transfer of the remaining funds in the Continuum of Care Planning Grant in the amount of eighty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars to Stanislaus County for funding expended by Stanislaus County. Item six, consider approving a first amendment to the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Implementation and Cooperation Agreement for Archway Commons Phase Two. Item seven, consider the appointment of Councilmember David Bright to serve as a non-voting member on the Blight, I mean, ed- eh, sorry, Blight Abatement Advisory Committee. Item number eight, consider accepting an informational report for the April two thousand twenty-one Accounts Payable Payment Register and Boyd Report. Item nine, consider accepting the monthly investment report for March two thousand twenty-one. Item number ten, consider approving an increase to the amount for the purchase of ten two thousand and twenty-two Ford Police Interceptors to Napa Ford by two thousand three hundred and twenty dollars from four hundred and six thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars for a new total amount not to exceed four hundred and nine thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Item eleven, consider approving the competitive bidding process from Sourcewell with Volvo Construction Equipment for th- three trailer-mounted air compressors for an amount not to exceed ninety thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Item twelve, consider approving the donation of K-9 Hudson from Thor's Hope Foundation for use as a facility dog for the City of Modesto Fire Department for an estimated initial cost of two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and an estimated annual cost of three thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Item thirteen, consider authorizing a payment in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand and fifty-two dollars to Belfort Property Restoration for the Dryden Golf Club, Clubhouse Fire Renovation. Item fourteen, consider accepting the Coffee Road Pavement Rehabilitation Project as complete, releasing securities and releasing payments totaling two million eight hundred and five thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars to United Pavement Maintenance. Item fifteen, consider accepting the Tully Road Pavement Rehabilitation Project as complete, releasing securities and releasing payments totaling one million six hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars to DSS Company, DBA Knife River Construction. Item sixteen, consider approving an agreement with Corallo Engineers for engineering design services for the Yosemite Transmission Main Project in the amount of one million one hundred and eighty-six thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars for the identified scope of services.
Move to move on consent items.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Canoyer and a second from Councilmember, uh, Wright. May I have, um, city clerk, please read the roll call.
Councilmembers Madrigal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricky.
Aye.
Zalaki.
Aye.
Canoyer.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Escutia Brayton.
Aye.
Mayor Swallow.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Do any of the council members have any comments and reports?
I, I do, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Scudia Brayton.
Thank you. Um, at a time when getting access to the COVID vaccine was just critical to our community, Modesto stepped up, and in partnership with the county, opened up the Modesto Center Plaza Vaccine Clinic. Um, this vaccine clinic was open from January the eighteenth through just last Thursday, when it closed. Um, during this period of time, over fifty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-three vaccines were administered for all those that made appointments and walked in. I personally was one of those that just walked in. I didn't make an appointment, and, um, it was very well organized. Um, it was very well, um, done. I was in and out in a very reasonable amount of time. The experience was good. It, it was a good experience. Um, same with my son. So I just wanted to thank all those who participated in making that happen. It was a critical public service at a critical time. Um, I understand that even though this location is closing, the city and county still have other locations, and I encourage those seeking vaccines that don't have them as of yet to go to the city and county website to see where those locations are. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Ricky.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to really thank, uh, the Sheriff's Department for participating in our Forward Together Initiative. And I'm just, I'm really hopeful that in participating in this, uh, initiative with us, that they will also agree to be bound by the conclusions that we come to, whether that's an independent auditor or a civilian review board, or whatever it is. So that when they're doing business in, uh, and when they're serving our community here in Modesto, that they're, they have the same rules that our police department will follow. That's all I got, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Canoyer?
Uh, yes, um, I want to, uh, to say about, uh, I went with the mayor and we attended the Institute of Technology's twentieth, um, anniversary. And, uh, if you haven't been out, it's, uh, a really fascinating, um, uh, campus. Uh, we watched, uh, demonstrations from police, um, medical, and fortunately, uh, from the culinary, which was very delicious. Uh, so it is a very, um, uh, interesting campus. And, and the thing that's really important is many, many institutions or campuses like that closed, have closed, but they have survived for twenty years, and it's because they have uh, a high reputation and they do really well. And I was very impressed, uh, with, uh, the, with our tour and watching, um, how the students, uh, were trained. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna thank, uh, three citizens that came to the aid of one of our police officers last Tuesday afternoon um, that was trying to apprehend a suspect that was breaking into vehicles. The suspect, uh, got in a scuffle with our police officer. He reached for our police officer's, um, revolver, uh, pwned out of his holster, and that's when, uh, three of our citizens of Modesto came to the aid of our police officer. It could have been a tragic, um, day. It could have been either a lo- uh, lost life of a police officer or a lost life of a suspect. Uh, but I think, uh, our hats off to our citizens of, uh, Modesto that, um, understand that it's, uh, our officers put their lives on the line every day. And I'm hoping that the chief will, um, give these three individuals some kind of recognition for their bravery, um, because they could have been, um, in the line of fire also. And I just wanna thank those three individuals. Hopefully, we'll see them here one day at our city council meeting. Uh, thank you for our citizens out there that really care for our officers.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Ricky's hand raised, but maybe it just was not able to be lowered. All right, thank you. I really appreciate all those comments. Uh, does the city manager have any comments?
One, one more, Mayor.
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry. Councilmember Madrigal.
Yeah, I was, I was actually trying to physically raise my hand. I can, you can see it now, but
Yes.
It chopped in and, uh.
I apologize.
Real quick, just wanted to bring to everybody's attention, uh, I just saw this article come out uh, hours ago about how, uh, certain homes that are within the county, uh, the Stanislaus limits are starting to receive, um, bottled, uh, free bottled water if they have tainted water wells with, uh, nitrates and other things that you're not supposed to have, uh, chemicals you're not supposed to have in your water. Again, this is not for City of Modesto customers, but if there's any folks that live in some of these unincorporated pockets, for example, in Modesto or in any other part of the community that may be watching, um, you can obtain more information online at Valley Water RC, the letter R, like Robert, and the letter C, like, you know, color, dot org. ValleyWaterRC.org, or you can call two zero nine seven five zero three eight six seven. Again, two zero nine seven five zero three eight six seven. And again, the website is ValleyWaterRC to get more information as to whether or not you qualify if you have, uh, well water, uh, serving your home or, uh, serving you. Uh, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's comments. Uh, one that just came to my mind, as is the weather is turning hot. We have some of those days that are extremely warm coming up with the summertime, and I encourage everyone to do their best to stay hydrated and out of the sun and the heat of the day, it, uh, can be detrimental to our health. And so, I will just give that little reminder. All right, um, city manager comments and reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I will like to defer my time to the city attorney who has an announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. If I, if I can.
Sure.
I'll go ahead and, uh, take a little bit of the city manager's time here. Um, and this is just more, I know I, I already provided information for the council regarding the census, uh, redistricting, which is just taking a look at the districts to make sure that the boundaries make sense, given, given the new census information. We're still waiting for the census, uh, data to come through. It's been delayed due to COVID. I know we've, we have heard, uh, Supervisor Graywall come and also express comments that the counties also look doing this in order to comply with the law. One of the first steps that we're going to take, uh, we're gonna be forming pursuant to the charter, the council will be, need to form a Citizens Districting Commission, and also And also, um, I know, uh, city manager's office and we'll be working together to, uh, put out, uh, and with the city clerk's office, a demographer as well to help with the process. The reason I wanted to announce it is as we move forward to look at, uh, having this committee, um, this commission appointed, it's one of those commissions that I'm sure if you'll, if you asked the city clerk the last time, um, the city did this, it's difficult to fill these commission seats because there is a, uh, again, the charter says a strong consideration for certain, uh, certain criteria, which is difficult to me. It's, uh, a retired Stanislaus County judge as chairperson, one member of a bona fide, uh, local taxpayer association, um, one member of bona fide local nonpartisan political organization, a member of bona fide local civil rights organization, um, member of a former grand, uh, civil grand jury member, and additional members who have demonstrated civic involvement and a capacity to serve in an honest, independent and impartial fashion while upholding the public confidence and its integrity of the, of the districting process, redistricting process. I, I read those because although they, they, they are out there, it's just to, to reach out to them and make sure that we get them involved. Sometimes takes a little time. We're going to start doing that. Uh, my office will be working with the clerk's office, also with staff, to put out the word, um, to make sure that we could start forming that, that, uh, that commission to get started with the process and be, be ready for the information whenever it comes out. Right now, they're, the, the estimate is no later than September. Hopefully, we get it earlier. But, uh, we're going to be forming the, the commission, bringing that to council, of course, that's a council, uh, formation, and also working on, on, uh, an RFP or hiring a demographer to help with that process. And that is it, Mayor. Just wanted to make that announcement for the public as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right. Next on the agenda is, um, unfinished business. This is to, uh, consider accepting an update on the proposed renaming of the King Kennedy Memorial Center and approving the Culture Commission's recommendation to permanently recognize the Melis family with the naming of the pavilion to the Melis Family Pavilion and the installment of a Melis Family Historical Plot to be located adjacent to the pavilion. So we'll have a staff report. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Swollen, members of the city council, Laurie Smith, Director of Parks, Recreation and Neighborhoods. So we'll start with a little bit of background. You'll recall in January of this year, uh, council adopted Resolution twenty-one dash zero two five approving the renaming of Melis Park to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Park and to permanently recognize the Melis family within the park. Council also returned the discussion of renaming the King Kennedy Memorial Center to the Culture Commission for further discussion. So the Culture Commission recommend, the Culture Commission met on February third, twenty-twenty-one for further discussion of renaming the center in the name of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. At that point, there were ma- many folks who attended the meeting and it was held by Zoom. Uh, the majority of the attendees did not support changing the names. There was written correspondence as well as attendance from representatives of the West Modesto Community Collaborative Board of Directors as well as the King Kennedy Memorial Center Board of Directors, and they opposed the renaming of the center. The commission, uh, discussed and considered carefully the recommendation and the recommendation they are making tonight is to not rename the King Kennedy Memorial Center at this time. And just as a reminder, there are seven members of the commission. Five of them were in attendance and the vote was unanimous in this regard. With regard to the honoring of the Melis family, they met on May fifth. Uh, they reviewed options provided by staff on how best to honor the Melis family and they're recommending tonight that, that they, um, that we na- name the newly renovated pavilion, the Me- Melis Family Pavilion and install a commemorative plaque memorializing the contributions to Modesto. So the recommendation tonight is that you accept the update from the Culture Commission on the proposed renaming and approve the Culture Commission's recommendation permanently recognizing the Melis family and renaming the pavilion to the Melis Family Pavilion and the installment of the Mel- Melis Family Historical Plaque to be located adjacent to the pavilion. That concludes my, uh, presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from council members at this time? All right. Uh, any, I have, um, some cards from the public. Uh, Demetrius Holt.
Good evening. Um, the renaming of the park, uh, in the majority of the cities around in the world, if the street is Martin Luther King Street and there's a park near it, then they, they renamed the park due to, to recognize the, the Dr. King, to recognize him. The pavilion that they're talking about for the Melis family, uh, that should be, to be recognized by the Melis family is by the renaming of the pavilion. But the park should be Martin Luther King Park. Uh, there's a culture that lives in these areas on Martin Luther Kings in every city. Um, and it should be recognized as what it is by the naming of the street, the Martin Luther King Street. And that's all.
Thank you. Sebastian Jones.
I'm going to go last, but I quit speaking. I don't have to take this long. Good afternoon, Mayor, and my fellow city councilman. As you know, well over seventeen, fifteen years, Mr. Jones has been boots on the ground. Now, and I just was, uh, I wanted some clarification. I mean, I could talk to you. Some clarification. You want to put the Melis name on the pavilion?
That's, that's correct, Mayor. The recommendation from the Culture Commission is that the pavilion be named the, uh, Melis Family Pavilion, which will be located on the pavilion and the, and a spot to be identified and then a historical plaque adjacent to it identifying the accomplishments and contributions of the Melis family.
Okay. Now, you know, I've been attending these culture committees for a very long time. It took me almost three years for them to hear my, my agenda. My agenda was for the park and the center. They had the destiny to split it. I didn't like that because it's that's one part. Now, here we go again. That Dr. King, I always say stand alone, but, you know, they had made the decision. There is a little plaque, uh, the Melis, and this is what I took and I said, okay, I'll go with that. Um, it's a plaque in front of that sign. I thought that, and I don't know what they doing up there, but you know, I, I'm going to speak freely. They said, keep the plaque, the little plaque of the, of the Melis family. I said, fine. Now, I don't know when they coming with this here and want to put his name up on that, uh, pavilion. Now, I don't, this, this is, this is, we're trying to get Dr. King's name. He sharing a name on the building. Now, we're going to get this, you know, the Melis family. Okay, they work, he worked for the Park Authority back in them days. Okay, I understand all that. But time has changed. Now, they can keep his plaque in front of the sign. But I know the reason. And it's sad that we people trying, especially African American, to see a six-foot statue with all your guys' name on it going down in history. I'm trying to memorialize that whole area. I'm trying. And I made a little offer to you guys to take Robert Kennedy, or go and put Robert Kennedy name on that pavilion, I guess, since everybody on trip. But I was looking at a plaque on the building for Robert Kennedy and keep the other part in there. But I wanted Dr. King to stand out and people recognize that we have, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King Park in the center. Now, like I said, I don't know where they coming with this. They, they gotta have that big name out there. Y'all know reason why. Ain't no shell hiding about. Y'all know what Mr. Jones is talking about. I'm not going to hide. Come on. We're fighting. These people got love out here. They want, they want to see African American have something. I shouldn't have to be up here basically begging. It's not right. Why he can't stand and be, remember Dr. Martin Luther King? Why, I think he should stand, but we want to add these other names. We're going to make sure they blurred out. Come on, people. Let's wake up. Y'all see what's going on in this world? Y'all see? Now let this man stand and let's honor, show him the love. You know, I have my sign and I want you to read my sign. You know, I'm standing for Dr. King. I'm not giving in to him in the graveyard. I am not giving in to him, Craig. You know, like Dr. King said on his quote, "We must never lose infinite hope." I am in a business, but I am a realist and I recognize that the issues are more than individual in their, in their sys- in systemic system. You know, we got to remember the words of our enemies, but not silence of our friends. That's what it says. And what it means, it revealing to me that I would never want my friends to feel wounded and, and betrayed by my failure to speak up and to help against these enemies and who are hard to make. Now, I'm telling y'all, come on, city council. When you guys vote, vote from your heart. Don't vote because David Wright and his personal vote. Vote from your heart. I heard David Wright say last week, he was at the museum and he was like proud. Well, guess what, David? Can you imagine the people that come and visit Modesto? They will come down the west side of Modesto and see a six-foot statue of Dr. King and you guys' name on there? I remember you said that. There was no African Americans in that building.
Thank you.
Museum. So I thank you for your time. But let's understand, I don't know what this culture committee is doing, but I've been at every meeting and they was just talking about the plaque. Remember the plaque. I said, yes, I honor that of the Melis family. Now, I need to come up with something else to stand out. It's not right. City Council, Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney and all involved, I urge you to stand and let's go down in history. Let's make a change. You know this town. You know.
All right.
Last two was right. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, but my feelings and my passion. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have Amanda Duran.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and members of the Modesto City Council. My name is Amanda Duran and I've been working with Mr. Sebastian Jones for over three years to bring the issue of renaming Melis Park and the King Kennedy Center to Martin Luther King Park and Center. He's been working at this issue for over fifteen years. We do thank you for voting to rename the park. There have been very few people in our community who have expressed opposition to the renaming of the center in comparison to all have sm- who have spoke in favor, not to mention the thousands of community members that have signed in favor of the King Kennedy Center name change. It would not only make sense, but it would be the right thing to do to convert the name of the center as well. I propose the idea of continuing to honor Robert Kennedy by keeping his brass bust inside of the center. Uh, there have never been any events to celebrate Robert Kennedy's existence at the King Kennedy Center such as how they have always done to celebrate Dr. King, so nothing would be lost here except Kennedy's name that is displayed on the building. Please consider completing this mission to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, Sarah Johnson.
Good evening, everyone on the panel. Um, what I would like to say, I'm in favor of the, the name change and getting the, um, statue for Dr. Martin Luther King. I'm a little nervous, but, um, what I also would like to say, I've, I am a longtime resident of Modesto and going to that Melis Park for years, you know, as a child and not really seeing anything, that park is not. I s- I've been, I've been here so long. Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if we get the, the statue of Dr. Martin Luther King, that would add some beauty to the, to the park and center. And kids coming up would be able to say, oh, you know, they would be proud of the park. And I think that, that having the, having the statue there is a, is a great asset to the town of Modesto or to the city of Modesto. So, and that's all basically that I would like, that I wanted to say is that I'm in favor of having the center and the statue, all, all, everything, you know, uniform. Cause it doesn't make sense to me to have, you know, um, one thing and not the other. I think the s- the statue would go, um, to get, you know, would make everything uniform as far as honoring Dr. Martin Luther King. So I guess that's it. This is my first time speaking, so if it doesn't make sense, you know, I'm.
It made perfect sense. You spoke very well. Thank you very much. Lovely.
Thank you. Next we have Kevin McClarty.
Hi again, Mayor and Council. Uh, thank you for letting me speak again. And, uh, I still support the renaming of the Martin Luther King Center and Park, the, uh, Martin Luther King Center and Park. And, uh, I, you know, I've been thinking about, what did these two great leaders stand for? Martin Luther King stood for civil rights and Robert Kennedy stood for peace. Robert Kennedy was against the Vietnam War. His basic theme of his campaign was peace. And so, you know, I've, I've been kind of thinking, how about if we name the Martin Luther King, we, we, despite the fact that the Culture Center is against it, that we rename the Martin Luther King, the King Kennedy Center, the Martin Luther King Center and Park. We have a statue of Martin Luther King in front of the, in front of the Martin Luther King Center. And in the park, we have a little meditation garden. And in that meditation garden, we can ha- we could have a peace sign, a little, something in bronze or, 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 you know, uh, a bronze or metal or something en- enblaced in the ground with a peace sign. And then we can have a little statue of Robert Kennedy and it can be a little garden. So that could be how we commemorate both leaders. Martin Luther King for civil rights, Robert Kennedy for peace. And his little, as I said, his little, uh, peace meditation center can be in the middle of the park. And so that way you're commemorating everybody's memory and you're not. And so that way you're commemorating everybody's memory and you're not offending anybody. So uh, I, you know, I would encourage the council to think out of the box. Yes, you can go against what your Culture Commission recommends. It's a recommendation only. The decision is still yours. And so you can step out of the box and make a decision on your own and say, you know, Culture Commission, we appreciate what you've you've done and your research and so forth. But this is what we've come up with. This is what we're gonna do. After all, listening to the Culture Commission, they really did not give a reason for the decision. They said, this is what we decided. Okay, that's fine. But they did not really give a reason for deciding that. And you know, uh, when I'm driving on ninety-nine going towards Stockton, I see that sign on the freeway that says Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. That's right. That puts that puts goosebumps up my spine. We need to have something like that in Modesto. Let's just imagine, seeing that on ninety-nine, Martin Luther King Center and Park, next right. That's gonna put goosebumps up somebody else's spine. And you know what? It's time that Modesto start putting goosebumps on people's spines. We need to stand up and do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? I'm seeing them. Any comments from the council?
Mayor, can I clarify something? Just one second.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I get off track when everybody's talking about the statue. Here's one model. And right here is where your name will go. My committee, the Dr. Martin Luther King Committee, will raise the money. I have some people, well, they did say it three years ago, hopefully. So this is the statue.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna let you know where your name will go. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any comments from the council? Jenny Canoyer, Councilmember Canoyer.
Uh, yes, uh, I understand that uh, one of their, the people who are against um believing, you know, having the park one name and the center different is because they said it should unify. But Cijos Chavez Park and they have the Matic Center is uh diff- is has a different name. So that is um would not be something that's unique to Modesto. And I have uh listened to not just, I'm not listening to just the Culture Committee, but I have been um asked and people have called me and commented long ti- long, long time residents of Modesto, not people that have been here twenty years, but people that have been here fifty and sixty years who have been at that center want it to stay the same because of what Martin Luther King Jr. meant and also what Robert uh Kennedy meant. So that is what I'm going on. I'm not, I'm going, I am taking the Culture Committee recommendation, but I'm also uh uh listening to the people who have called me who not, they're not all on the uh the board at the center. There are people who, they're they're co- community people who have been there, who have gone there and want it to stay the same. And so um I will be uh doing what the Culture Committee recommend. It will be my recommendation.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members?
I make a motion to approve?
I had a question. I had my hand raised.
Okay, Councilmember Madrigal.
Yeah, I had some questions um for staff. Uh, they can come back though. So if we could, could we just go through the timeline again, please, of uh the process that the Culture Committee went through? Just wanted to.
Sure.
Is it on the slides?
Um.
I believe so.
All right. Right. So the slide that's up now shows when the council approved the renaming of the park, which is on January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. Earlier in January, the Culture Commission originally considered both of the items. Um, at the council meeting, the council adopted this resolution and then returned the discussion to the King Kennedy uh or to the Culture Commission to consider further discussion. And at that point, the Board of Directors of both the West Modesto Community Collaborative as well as the King Kennedy Board of Directors had expressed concern about the renaming and wanted an opportunity to have a more formal interaction at the Culture Commission level. So then that did take place. That took place on February third. Um, there were letters of support or, uh, I'm sorry, letters opposed to the renaming from both the West Modesto Collaborative as well as the King Kennedy Board of Directors. They also attended the meeting. Um, at the January meeting, there were also people in attendance opposed to the renaming, but in support of the renaming of the park, including Odessa Johnson. Um, there were also attendees in support of the renaming of the center. Culture Commission had a lengthy deliberation. I think some of you were in attendance during that meeting. And the uh ultimate outcome was the commission voted unanimously. There was uh five members in attendance. Two members were absent. Now the May, I mean, the March and the April meetings were canceled. One was a result of a technical difficulty. The other uh was a lack of quorum. So they did not meet again until May, which at which time they considered how to honor the Melis family after the renaming of the park. They did that. That's included as part of the staff report.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop that part. Can you back up to the, you said until May? What happened, I think?
So the the commission decided in February to oppose the renaming of the King Kennedy Memorial Center. They did not make a decision about the honoring of the Melis family at that time. They asked staff to come back with some options for their consideration. The March and April meetings were canceled, one of them due to a Zoom failure, the others due to a lack of a quorum. The main meeting was held. The staff presented some options with the renaming. The recommendation from the Culture Commission is what is before you tonight. The renaming of the picnic pavilion or just the naming of it, it's not named at this point. And then a historical plaque adjacent to the pavilion.
Um, I had a question about the um I had a question about the um, I guess uh the the process that the um Culture Commission went through. You said there was a lengthy deliberation. Could you, could you share like what some of the reasons were that the Culture Commission uh recommended against the change of the name of the King Kennedy Center to the Dr. Martin Luther King Center?
Well, uh, Councilmember Madrigal, um, the minutes from the February third uh meeting simply identify the issue. They identified those who spoke in favor, those who spoke in uh opposed, and what the action is.
I see. Was um, were there any, were there any staff, oh, sorry, pardon if you were still looking through your notes?
That's okay.
To elaborate. No. Were there any um uh options brought forward by staff uh on other ways that um uh that Robert Kennedy could be could be honored? Was that discussed at all during the Culture Commission? Um, is is the name change of the King Kennedy Center would change to this Dr. Martin Luther King Center?
Not that I recall, and that the direction was to go back and obtain additional input and formal feedback from the Board of Directors of both the King Kennedy Memorial Center as well as the West Modesto Community Collaborative. And that is what the commission did.
I see. I I wonder, I'm wondering if uh it's possible to go, I would like to see um this issue brought back before the Culture Commission with some options similar to what, to the options that were presented before the Culture Commission by staff on how to honor the Melis family in a similar fashion. If we could uh have this issue about the renaming of the King Kennedy Center um and possible options to also honor Robert Kennedy, if that could be brought forward by staff uh to the Culture Commission so that they can deliberate and um and make a decision and also use this opportunity to gain additional input. Uh, I think especially at a time where if everything goes well, uh you know, the city may reopen on June fifteenth along with the state and uh we may be able to get an additional community participation, um, which I think there's never too much of. And so that's that's what I'd like to see uh happen uh going forward. I I'd like for us to, uh, if possible, accept the recommendations from the Culture Commission on uh renaming of the pavilion, honoring the Melis fam- uh to the Melis family, and also um honoring of the Melis family with the plaque act as recommended. And then uh, prepare these staff to go back to to the um Culture Commission uh regarding the re- with staff presenting options on other ways that uh Robert Kennedy could still be honored um and present those as options. Um, I see nothing wrong with taking one more bite at the apple, if you will, and one more try and to, you know, to to have this uh discussion before the Culture Commission and the recommendation come back to us. Um, there's, there's no, obviously there's no need to rush through the process. And uh, that's what I'd like to see happen uh going forward uh tonight's meeting. And we've um, we've gotten this far. We waited this long uh to to see this process through. But um, one of the speakers that spoke uh gave an example of other ways, for example, that Robert Kennedy could be honored. It was it was just one example, but I I'm curious as to, well, what I heard is that 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 conversation, that discussion did not happen at the Culture Commission. And so I see nothing wrong with with asking the Culture Commission to have that that discussion, to have these other options presented to them by city staff and uh and then to bring forward recommendations. Anyway, those are my, those are my comments. Those are my thoughts about it. I
Okay.
I um, before we, before we move forward with the with the.
So are you, are you making a motion?
Well, there's a motion on the table.
Oh, we already have a motion. I was gonna make a comment also.
Well, I don't know, at this point of order, I don't know if I, if you had recognized the motion maker before I started speaking or not, and then therefore you got a second or not. So i- if there, if that's the case, then I definitely like to, you know, present the motion that I was uh, that I was indicating in my comments a couple minutes ago. May I proceed, Mayor?
So here we are.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the Culture Comi- Commission?
Hello?
Yes, um, I have a motion from Councilmember. Sorry, pardon me, Councilmember Madrigal.
Well, it was cutting out. I wasn't sure, like, were you, were you recognizing the prior motion maker, you know, without the second? Or was I gonna be able to go ahead and present my motion that I was indicating in my in my comments? Uh, cause uh, I'd be happy to do so.
Right.
A second then, um.
All right. So I had a motion from Councilmember Wright and I stopped it in order to take your comment, Councilmember Madrigal. I now have a second from Councilmember Canoyer. Um, I did.
Are you, are you rec- are you recognizing the motion maker in the second or?
Yes, I am. I am. And I wanted to make a comment also at this time that um this is always difficult. I was born in Modesto in nineteen fifty-four and I knew the Melis family and was very uh happy when the park was named after that family. Uh, I remember that time. I also was uh very happy when Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard Drive was named Dr. Martin Luther King Drive. If uh anyone wants to hear a great speech, um listen to what Robert F. Kennedy had to say on the night, I believe, of April fourth, or it may have been the next night after Martin Luther King was assassinated. Robert Kennedy was a civil rights leader and gave a speech on the night of that, of his death that calmed our entire nation. Uh, fifty-three years ago, that was April nineteen sixty-eight on, um, Memorial Day, actually, nineteen sixty-eight. Robert Kennedy was in Modesto on a whistle stock tour just a couple blocks from here. I was thirteen years old and was able to uh shake his hand three times. And then five days later, he was assassinated in Los Angeles and died the next day on June sixth. That was in nineteen sixty-eight. I first met Sebastian, I think it was in two thousand nine, and I know that he has been boots on the ground. We have been together, but I I will, uh, I will support this vote and this recommendation and uh would also love to see a statue at some time and help in any way to uh even privately make that happen. So we have a motion from Councilmember Wright, a second from Councilmember Escudia Brayden. Oh, excuse me, from uh Councilmember Canoyer.
Okay, I'm ready.
Uh, we'll take a vote on this motion at this time. Can I ask? Sure, Councilmember Madrigal, sure.
Uh, thank you for recognizing that, Mayor. Um, just wanted to to let the council know, I I will be voting in support of the motion um because there's no way to separate the two items um as currently presented before us, unless of course, if the maker of the motion and the uh second would be willing to rescind their their motion and their second, then it would be, it would provide me an opportunity to vote on the renaming of the pav- on the naming of the pavilion and the plaque to honor the Melis family. I'd love to be able to separate that from the um from the uh renaming of the King Kennedy issue. Um, I just wanted to ask if uh, if uh my colleagues would would do me the courtesy and indulge me in that way.
Uh, Councilmember Wright is staying with his motion. Councilmember Canoyer, are you staying with your second?
I'm staying with my second.
All right, thank you.
I asked, so having said that, I I will be voting uh in support of this because I I do want to uh recognize uh the Melis family uh and uh and, you know, by extension, uh, the Greek community, uh, you know, the Melis family were all Greek Americans. And I've, I've done some uh, I've had some conversations with um some local um select, there were self-identified uh Greek Americans here in Modesto. And uh, one of the uh wonderful conversations that came out of that was the rich history that um, that the Greek religious leaders had with the civil rights movement and the very early on support that they demonstrated uh uh for Dr. Martin Luther King and for the civil rights uh movement uh being the right thing to do. And so for those reasons and many others, I'll definitely be voting in support of this motion uh despite my disappointment that we were not able to send a directive back to the Culture Commission that they uh take a look at the issue, the issue of the renaming of the King Kennedy Center and explore other ways to honor uh Robert Kennedy if possible. Um, so just wanted to let everybody know.
Thank you. Can I ask the city clerk to call the rule for this item?
Councilmembers, Madrigal?
Aye.
Ricky?
Aye.
Zalaki?
Aye.
Canoyer?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Escudia Brayden?
Aye.
Mayor Swala?
Aye. Uh, carries unanimously. Are there any, thank you, everyone. Are there any matters too late for the agenda this evening? Are there any, thank you, everyone. Are there any matters too late for the agenda this evening? Seeing none, I am calling this meeting of the City Council to be adjourned.